Follow the Twitter and subscribe to my live stream. If everyone would please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands in the name of the Constitution, the Constitution of Justice for All.
Thank you, everyone, for being here. Uh, our first item up is public comment items on the agenda. Um, if, if you wish to speak, there is a pad at the end of the table if you could sign in with your and um, address on that, please. Whoever has signed in.
Start. Hello, everybody. Let's get warm in here. Jamie Sterling, 20 Miller Road. I want to address item seven, eight, and nine on the agenda tonight. Break to see and read through the master contract of item seven. And I had a question, a couple of questions about it. One was, did we sign this 10 years ago? Which is be the first time that we will have signed a master agreement. And I don't need answers now, of course, because this comment not. I wanted to make a note of the strong, strong ethical provisions in Schedule B number 22, uh, which I've seen in any contracts, but I'm glad to see them included in this one and how they filter down to the municipality level. Other questions are on, is any part of item eight or nine on tonight's agenda uncovered by this DFP contract, or did these stand alone as actions that sound continue without signing the contract?
I believe they're standalone.
Yeah, they're standalone. They look like standalone. Yeah. And then, uh, finally, on number nine, uh, what happens with the rocks? We're talking about removing parts of the stone wall. Uh, and people care about those stone walls a lot in Bethany. Uh, are the rocks available to other residents? Where do they go and who gets it?
Well, it's something I haven't thought about, but well, if someone's interested in them, depending on what we actually do with them, we don't know if we're going to push the wall or actually remove.
And just, this is a point of information, this is private property, so the rocks technically belong to the property owner. So, uh, the issue that the board will be addressing is whether or not any action should be taken to address complaints by drivers that the stone wall interfered on site and creates a public safety issue. That's what the board will have to discuss and determine.
Okay.
And then, once that's determined, then what is the appropriate action?
I understand that while the rocks are private property, but the town has a right of way for that. And I'm just curious if there, if, if they were, if it was posted that hey, rocks are available, I would suspect that there might be a bunch of residents who would say, yeah, I've left standing with rocks. So I just, I throw that out there as something that came to mind when I read through item nine, the agenda.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks. Is there anybody else on the list?
I can't be, uh, it's Connie, I can't be on the list, but I wrote in the chat that I have a public comment.
Okay, um, I have Amy standing here to speak first, and then we'll come to you, Connie, if that's okay?
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, Amy with N C thirty, Nathan Drive. Um, I'm speaking in regard to item number 11, which is the Park Commission update. Um, I would want to find out, and I realize this is not a back and forth, so I'm not getting answers at this moment. Uh, but I wanted to say, I wanted to know who actually rehired Mr. Nick Patone to be a part of Bethany Hoops? Was it the Board of Selectmen that actually hired him? If so, I have looked back and I don't see anything in meeting minutes where this went in front of the board. I may have missed it, so I could have missed it. Um, and if I'm wrong, then if someone could just get back to me and let me know where that occurred. And if it wasn't the Board of Selectmen that hired him, then who did so? Um, if it was the Park Commission numbers, I'm just curious how they have the authority to hire someone that works for the town. Which then leads me to ask, why is the Park Commission involved in the hiring of a new director? I'm looking to find out, will HR, our HR personnel be involved in this? Um, I'm on the Board of Ed, as most people know, so I understand the importance of confidentiality and executive session. So I just want to point out that the Park Commission should not be discussing possible candidates with names for the director position in a public setting. That is something that should be done by the Board of Selectmen, whether or without the town's HR personnel during executive session. Uh, if Park Commission would like to have any input, and I'm sure that they do, because they, they know what they're looking for in a candidate that would round out the department, the Board of Selectmen, I would suggest provide them with candidate qualifications without names and documents, with no biases. And I also just want to make the last comment being, um, that I find it interesting that we all in the town know how Nick Patone was our interim Park Commission Director and how there was an abrupt resignation on a Friday from him. I just find it interesting that in any company setting, whether it be corporate America or small business, if someone were to design in that manner, I'd really not see how they would be retired back. Yet, here we are, and he's back working for the town again. Thank you.
Okay, Connie. Just unmute yourself.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, yep.
Um, my comment, it's Connie Royster, um, for Fairwood Road. My comment has to do with the, um, item that refers to restrictions on public comment, which I think is item number one. So I wish to make a comment objecting to the First Selectmen's unilateral past and present actions in determining that there should be no public comment at Board of Selectmen meetings and special meetings. I further object to the imposition of restrictions on public comments as was imposed by this agenda tonight. That public comment be limited only to agenda items. The point of public comment, in case you are not aware, is to allow citizens to bring to the attention of the town leadership items of concern to them, especially when leadership has shown itself to be removed from, unaware of, and dismissive of what townspeople are concerned about. I regard this effort to stifle public comment as oppositional to transparency in government and a violation of the First Amendment of every citizen in this town. To the best of my knowledge, and I'm sure someone will correct me if I'm wrong, there is nothing prohibiting public comment at any meeting, noticed or not. And the attempt by this administration to curtail it is an abuse of power. Thank you.
Is there any other, uh, public comment? Hearing none, we will move on to item number three, which is the, the approval of the December fourth, twenty twenty.
Well, I just want to check the chat, just to make sure that there was.
I think it was Connie just saying she had a comment.
Okay, so there was no one else?
Yeah. No, I just pulled it up, it was Connie saying that.
Oh, I can't, I can't.
That's okay. I get it. That's okay. Um, yeah. Thank you. You're welcome. Thank you. Uh, next item is the approval of the December fourth, twenty four minutes. May I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
A second. So we discussed that. Well, we're going to discuss and then approve.
Okay.
Yeah, but we need the second to. Move forward with it.
Okay, second.
We can discuss some comments, questions, or corrections.
Um, I, I'm gonna say that I'm gonna move to approve the minutes as written, I just wanted to point out for the purposes of today's minutes. Um, I'm looking at page two where I, in December, talked about the public comment or lack of public comment on the agenda for December, and you did explain that it was because it was a special meeting. I think there was more that I said, I just want to note for this meeting that public comment is, in, in special meetings is allowed and has been done before, and so I just want to say that I want to record my position as being that public comment should be allowed, even in, in all meetings, and I think that, um, in a regular meeting, absolutely, we should have open public comment, and there is no other opportunity for people to express their concerns, I think Connie's right, what she said. And I think that, you know, peak residents should have an opportunity to have a, a time, a noted time to express their concerns, um, any concern that may or may not be on the agenda. We did that for almost a year, and I don't see the reason for changing that now.
Um, just remember that people do not have to wait for a meeting to express a concern, I have people reaching out to me all the time about a myriad of things.
Right, but, but that's, that's irrelevant, that's irrelevant to what we're discussing, we're talking about open comment, open comment, not limited public comment, and I actually think that there is some legal grounds for forcing it at, at public meetings, and, and so I'm just gonna ask if we can go back to what we did for a long time, where we had transparency, we had more, um, we had, we gave members of the public greater opportunity to discuss what's on their mind, and that is different from what anybody knows, they can write you a letter, send you an email. I'm talking about the right to have public comment at these meetings. Um, so I just want to record, um, my position on that, and my request that we return to what we did before, which was to have open public comment at regular meetings, and I think we should have, at a minimum, limited open, uh, limited public comment at special meetings. Um, I don't see a reason not to do that. Um, so that's, that's my request, I don't, I'm not gonna make any suggestions for the minutes, I think it's fine. I do want these minutes, though, to record what my position is on, on the public comment section of the agenda, thank you.
Okay, uh, any other comments, questions, or corrections? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Any opposed? Any? Good morning. Uh, next item is, uh, the approval of the tax refunds, of which you have been provided a list, um, which is a total of $2,253.38. May I have a motion to approve the tax refund, excuse me, refunds as presented? So moved, a second.
Second.
Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any stunted? Okay, uh, next item is the approval of cemetery deeds, you think of three deeds that are listed. May I have a motion to approve the deed that presented?
So moved.
Yes, second.
Okay. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay. We are now down to, uh, in the packet was the list of the, um, members of the, uh, for approval for the, uh, housing advisory committee, they were contacted, they did show interest, um, Alex Hutchinson had spoken now with all of them, and of a comfortable moving, you know, Nancy in here, comfortable moving forward with the group. So may I have a motion to approve the list that presented in the packet?
Um, does everyone have a packet, I just wanted for the.
Well, there are copies on the table.
I mean, for the purposes of people who are remote, if we could just read the names.
Sure. Let me get to that page.
Is it posted, I don't know. I, I, it, it's just like.
Four five names.
Yeah.
Yeah.
One second.
Okay, we have Alex Hutchinson, Leslie Higgins Fiddle, Lauren Sardi, Inbridgeon, and Tom Mabre.
Thank you.
The members, uh, being before the. May I have a motion to approve?
Uh, I'll, I'll make that motion to approve in a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and okay. Next item is, uh, uh, the discussion, uh, to consider an act on the resolution, which is provided in the packet of the agreement on the C T uh, master municipal agreement. Uh, just to address Esther Sterling's, uh, comment that he had earlier, I did have Will look back and say this was prior to me coming into office, um, and he could not find anything, so I don't know if it was done and just put in another file somewhere, um, but he did not have anything in the town clerk's office. So, um.
For any of the DOT's master municipal agreements?
Correct.
Because they have construction projects, but we probably didn't do any state projects.
It was, it was before me.
This, this, this only applies if you're doing a state-funded, uh.
Yes.
They would take care of their roads.
What's that?
They, they take care of their roads, so, you know. You're correct.
Yeah, so like a state local bridge program, where they're giving you a grant, and you could use this. So we probably just haven't had any since they've done these. I can't think of the last time we did one of those.
It's been 10 years ago, so, with the other parents' agreement, so.
But Bethany must be on some list that triggered this letter, right?
Right, right, because if you read the cover letter, it was saying it's time to renew, so I'm just wondering if there was actually an agreement, but it was put in a file somewhere else and wasn't necessarily filed in the town clerk's office. Can I get a motion?
Is there any downside to this?
Not that I'm aware of.
Um. Excuse me, but if you read the cover letter, it states that the 2014 letter was never executed.
Oh.
So.
You know, yeah, so it could still be in a file somewhere, but it just was never.
So it existed 10 years ago.
Yeah.
Okay.
We.
Yeah.
We did nothing with it.
But if there's no project, there would be no reason.
But we just don't.
Right, but there's still no project, right, and they, and they.
And for like 10 years.
Right, it appears that what DOT does is, on a rotational 10-year basis, they, they send letters to towns, and they say, okay, because we're approaching the, uh, the expiration of the initial 10-year term, then later on, they say, you know, but you never executed it 10 years ago, so there's nothing that's expiring as far as we're concerned, right? Because something was executed, but it's, it appears to be a rotational basis that they reach out to towns, uh, and then offer this contract for consideration resolution, if you wanted to enter into it, uh, the resolution is following the instruction page, which is, uh, immediately after uh, the letter dated December 19th, they say you know what you'd be, uh, authorizing. If you want to table this or postpone till your next meeting, I can reach out to the department and ask them, inquire with them about the status, to see if they have any, if they have anything on record. Uh, if, if that would satisfy your inquiry, because that's something I, I have not, uh, we're just looking locally, because we thought we would have a copy here, but, uh, what we could inquire with them, just to answer the question of whether or not it was ever seriously executed.
This paragraph almost sounds like there's a downside to not signing it. Right? Like.
It just gets you on record, should projects pop up, you've already got.
The funding.
Place.
You don't get to play around, you know?
Right.
We could provide you with more information on the subject, is there a stated deadline?
Okay.
Uh, vision terms given 30 days of, uh, before January 16th.
With this. That's. Right.
You know, I mean, I'm, I'm inclined to say we should sign it.
Yeah, just by signing it, you don't have to participate.
It doesn't bind you.
Right, yeah.
Yeah. So are you making that motion last? Uh, I'm looking at that list.
Yeah, I, I mean, I'm moved to, um, yeah, that we should, we should sign the contract, that you should sign the contract.
Five?
A second.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
You know, I, I did read through almost every word of this thing, and a lot of it is boilerplate, I didn't see anything unusual, you know.
This is improper.
Right, yeah, right, so.
Okay. We will take care of that. Uh, next one is, uh, the draft of the easement, temporary easement for 75 Presswood, which will help us to resolve some drainage issues, because we have to go on, try to properly do some of the work.
So, Paul, can you talk a little bit about what the drainage issues are, I'm just curious?
Well, we felt, there's a, a ditch that the current resident, um, is having some issues with, and we need to do some correction to it. Um, but they also are looking to put a, I believe, a garage on the property, and this sort of impedes.
You want me to explain a little bit?
Give a little more of the legal ease?
Yeah, and try to, just kind of, what's before you is, uh, a temporary, uh, easement for purposes of drainage across 60, uh, 75 Presswood. So apparently, when this subdivision was, uh, approved back in the seventies, the easement was supposed to go along the property line, but on the adjacent parcel, uh, that, that I think is 60, 67 Presswood, uh, I'm just pulling up the map, but this parcel here, which is, uh, so it's, uh, parcel ID 102185, and on the subdivision map, it shows the easement on that parcel. That's, I'm gonna call it pipe one. Somewhere in time, a second pipe was installed from Crestwood terminating somewhere on the parcel identified as 10221-10, which is 75 Presswood, but that drainage pipe terminates without connection to any swell or, or basin or anything, it just right in the middle of the property. And there was a, there was a, uh, flooding issue at 75 Presswood, and it was discovered that this pipe just doesn't connect to anything and ends nowhere, and was kind of like baking up with soil, which was causing the, the, the water no longer to flow to the extent it ever did. And, uh, but the owner of 75 Presswood, the new owner of 75 Presswood, has taken the position, well, this parcel, my parcel should never have been encumbered by this, by the easement, because the there is no easement for pipe two, and the easement, uh, there is no easement for pipe one, it should have gone on the adjacent parcel, and apparently sometime back in 19, late seventies, around 1980, there was an, an agreement between the town and the owner of, uh, parcel 102 slash 18 dash five, which again, I believe is 67, to relocate the easement onto 75. There's nothing of record that supports that, that's anecdotal, and all I know is that the easement that where pipe one is located, which is along the, uh, the rear property line, identified on the map that I've attached, with, uh, the number 355.0, that has been in place since around 1980. So, you know, so there's a number of concerns that have arisen with respect to this issue. One was the owner of the rear parcel where the easement was supposed to go, wanted to make sure that the boundary lines were accurate of the, of the two parcels, and if any easement were to be put in place, that it be properly located. Issue with respect to 75 Presswood is whether or not the town had acquired an easement by prescription over the 30 or 40 years that it's been there. Right, uh, because there is a swell that is a natural swell that is in the rear of the property, where ultimately the, this drainage pipe extends, and the water just drains naturally to the east, you know, uh, and, uh, but there is no easement for pipe number two that comes off of the, I'll call it the southern side in the vicinity of point 24.97, if you look off of Crestwood in the lower, uh, southeastern corner of that property. There's no easement of record, and it's clear that even if an easement had arisen by prescription, that easement would only extend to the point where the pipe extend. And we would need an easement to continue the connection of a pipe to the swell in order for the water to flow from our catch basin property.
So there's no other pipe that connects?
There's nothing there.
It just ends there.
It just ends there.
Okay.
All right, so the owner of the property, uh, has denied our request to, uh, for an easement to extend the pipe, and that would be the let, the least expensive alternative to fix the drainage issue. And we have to respect that, it's their property, and this is the, I'd say, the, the, the best useful side of their property, and they don't want a drainage pipe running through the center, which is understandable, so, uh, working with the Department of Public Works, Don Che, and, and his, his team, uh, they're working with the town engineer to develop a, uh, plan that relocates pipe two along Crestwood and connects to the area of the catch basins where pipe one is. And while we're doing that, we need to drain water, so the property owner has agreed to give us on a temporary basis the right to extend the pipe, so the water will flow while we're doing this construction of a new pipe, you know, in our public right of way. And then we will remove the temporarily newly installed pipe extending to the swell and pipe two completely from the property.
And this one will, this one here will be?
This, this we've left for further discussion while we verify meets and bounds of the two properties and, uh, discuss the legalities of whether or not that pipe is going to remain in place or not, because the town is going to have rights that may have arisen as a matter of law, but we do have, we have discussed the issue with the, the adjoining property owner, and they have been cooperative about relocating the easement back onto their property if we have to.
Temporary or?
Permanent.
Okay.
Uh, and then, which, if, if we have to go in that direction ultimately, then the eas, then the easement will go to where it was originally intended on subdivision map, and the pipe will no longer be on the property owner who is saying that we don't have a right to encumber any of their property. Uh, and third issue has arisen by, uh, another neighbor on the street about the addition of these two next extra catch basins, and how that's going to be introducing more volume of water into this swell. Uh, and, uh, we're, I, I suggested that in the first instance, we provide him with the information that he had requested so that he could review it and determine whether or not that information satisfies his concern, and if not, then we address his concern, uh, through a possible alternative that the gentleman at DPW are working on possible alternative solutions. So what's before you is a temporary easement that, I'm still in the process of going back and forth with the, the attorney for 75 Presswood, but it's in substantial final form that would grant the, uh, town the right to install a pipe on a temporary basis, a drainage pipe, uh, and it's the town to grant it a temporary easement. Since this was not designed by an engineer, I don't have the meets and bounds of what that easement is, so I tried to create uh, a good explanation of where it would be by a pipe that extends from the existing pipe northward to the rear property line into a existing swell along the property on the side of what's designated as point 2.9, 24.97 and I believe, uh, 2.5. That easement would terminate immediately, uh, after our work was done and the new pipe was installed and operational, we would then have 30 days to remove this. And the way that it was explained to me, that the, the, the proposed installation of the pipe would begin at the swell side and work backwards. So they would, when they're ready to connect it, they would immediately remove the, the temporary pipe.
That makes sense.
So it would be, it would be, it would flow perfect, perfectly. So, uh, while I'll submit to you, I don't have a final document, this is in substantial final form, where you know, when I last left council, I had not yet, uh, left, uh, not yet gotten the Schedule A, which you now have, that was one omission, and, uh, he just wanted to add some language, uh, stating, well, you know, the property owner should not be responsible if there are any, you know, wetland permits or zoning permits, that that should be the obligation of the town, and that has been addressed at, in Section 3.3 of the easement. That's basically saying that the town is going to be responsible to, to get all necessary permits and pay any necessary application fees or permit fees, which, as you know, uh, the, you know, the town doesn't pay application permit fees to itself. So, uh, but we're holding the property owner harmless against any violations of any local zoning or wetland regulations if we fail to follow.
Thank you, um, so this would be, this agreement affects 75, would there be another one for 67 Presswood or?
Yeah, so when we get to that, when we get to that point, there would be an easement, a, a permanent, it would probably be a temporary construction and permanent utility easement that would come before you for approval, that would address that if we are going to be relocating them.
And do you think the work could be done by the date specified, I think, is it June 30th?
Yeah, according to DPW, yes, it would be about, you know, depending. Yeah, according to DPW, yes. It would be about, you know, depending upon Mother Nature and the frigid temperatures that we didn't have just a week ago. They said that the whole project is about three weeks.
Okay.
Yeah.
And is it your understanding that the people, the residents at seventy-five Crestwood are basically willing to sign this in the?
That was what was represented.
We've had a few meetings with them.
Yeah, with them and their attorney, their attorney's name is Robert Sarapo of our Porto and Percy.
Okay. I don't think I have any more questions.
Do we approve this, or is it a town meeting?
No, this is, this is, you approve this, I don't think we need town meeting approval of this. It's a temporary easement agreement. When I looked at historically, what's been done, it's been done at your level.
I just think, the last time we, I think it was a town meeting, we did easement on Falls Road.
If, if there's, you know, if they're being approved at that point, then we would refer to coming. But you, standing in a legislative capacity for this purpose, and it's the temporary nature of it, if this is really more like doing as a resolution of a claim, of, you know, this will end up in litigation if it is not addressed properly. So what I'm trying to do is work with all three property owners, satisfy some of them or none of them, I don't know which I'm doing. But so far, we're leading in the right direction, and the neighborhood seems to be coming together.
This is the solution for the next couple of months, and then?
This is the temporary solution until we come back to you with, I'll give, I'll come back to you with an update once we are, I'll call it addressing Pipe One.
So when this project is completed and the Pipe Two is going to be removed, and the easement is going to be, what is it, canceled or reversed, um, migrating?
Turned it.
Yeah. We, we don't need to do another vote for that, okay?
Because it's, it's part of our agreement.
Okay.
And theoretically, right now, you know, you have a drainage problem, you don't, you don't, you have an easement, but it was put in the wrong spot for some reason back in the late seventies or eighties. So, you know, this is correcting what the town already has, and this is a step in making that correction.
I agree.
Motion, we have the, we have the motion.
Right. So just for purposes of the motion, it would be a motion to approve the proposed draft temporary easement for seventy-five Crestwood and to authorize the first level to sign.
I'm moved.
Second.
There's a comment to question? There are none, all in beta?
Aye.
Next, you act on the Keegan Drive, were you able to take a ride by and go down Keegan and try to pull out? I mean, it is, it is slightly easier this time of year, because a lot of the overgrowth has sort of died in the winter. But during the summertime, I took a ride, and it was difficult to to see oncoming traffic.
I looked at all the things, and the, it's not the owner, it's a representative of the owner you're dealing with. But they're correct too, it's not a new thing. The site line issue's been there, yes, the complaints are recent.
But it's become, the complaints become more recent and more numerous about it.
So, I, I, I'm pretty sure that the, the stone wall starts in parallel to the Bear Hill, goes twenty feet or something, and then it curves out, went around a tree in the past. I'm pretty sure that curved out part is in the town right of way. I don't know whether the other, other wall, the wall is, because it's such a short section. Is the, is the homeowner agreeable to the town removing? Or are they willing to move the stone wall back onto their property?
This is the, this is the, so I, the first level one referred to the complaint today, and I made contact. There was, there's, the property owner's nephew was the representative that we're connecting with, and he's been very, very cooperative and suitable to speak with. So I appreciate, I genuinely appreciate that, and he's been generally responsive. And he understood the issue and the concern. But again, he's, well, the stone wall has been there for, I don't know, maybe more than a hundred years. Maybe more than, longer than the road, I don't know the answer to the question, because I haven't been able to determine how long the stone wall's been there. But initially, I suggested to him, I said, well, would you be agreeable if the town entered the property and removed the wall at no expense to the property? Because the property owner is owned and occupied by an elderly person who doesn't have great financial means. And so there was a discussion with the first level and Don Che of Public Works, and we discussed, well, would this add an expense to the town? If DPW went there with some employees and some trucks and removed the, either remove the rocks or put the rocks somewhere else on the property, on this property. And it was determined that, you know, they could fit this into their work schedule, and they can go and do it without added expense to the town. The conversation then kind of shifted into, well, why should I have to do this at all? Because this adds aesthetic value to this property. And it's been there, and this is now unreasonable complaints. And I can say with a certainty today that we have taken no steps, because that's why I wanted to come to this body to say, what do you think we should do next? Because ultimately, this is the authority that has the jurisdiction over the public's rights away, and this is the authority that has the jurisdiction to decide to take action. Now, I will say in reviewing case law on this, there have been instances where the Board of Selectmen have authorized the removal of a shrub. And the court said, well, you didn't have to remove the whole shrub. You should have only cut back a third of the shrub, because only a third of the shrub interfered with the public right of way. So the, the, the measure of action is, what is reasonably necessary to provide, you know, to protect public health, safety, and welfare? What is reasonable necessary? I don't know, I'm not a traffic engineer, I'm not a sightline expert, and I can't tell you, take down rocks eighty-two through two hundred. I can't tell you, take down the whole thing. Now, if we get an agreement from the property owner, then there's no concern. Or his, or her representative, then, then that's fine. Any action, you know, we will deal with, and I'll have an appropriate release sign before we take that action. But if we're going to sue Sontay, just enter without authority, which you have the right to authorize, if you determine that this is a danger to public health, safety, and welfare. You can take all steps that are reasonably necessary to ensure the protection of public health, safety, and welfare. So my suggestion is, or for thoughts? And this has been, we've addressed, been trying to address this since the beginning of October. And when December came and I wasn't hearing the response, I said, let's get it to this body so that we are at least advancing the dialogue. We could engage a third party to give us a report on what is necessary to protect. I don't know if it presents a sightline issue.
Can I ask you, I think in one of the emails, thank you for sending them, the owner or the representative said that they were gonna look into what it would cost to move it, move the wall?
I haven't heard that.
Okay. I was wondering if there was an update?
No, that's why I, that's why I.
I could see, I was there, I could see, I could feel like I could see, you know, if you lived, and they deal with it too, but they, like, I could see that it was, I could see the issue, right? And if you're in a rush, I could see, you know, that there's potential, a problem there. But also, you know, isn't there a rule, like, if the wall's been there a certain time, then there's sort of more, you have, the town has more of a higher burden, I guess?
Well, you know, I looked into stone walls and protections, and, you know, there, I mentioned a couple statutes in my email to you, and I don't know of any record that creates or establishes this as a historic stone wall that is afforded any protection. It's not designated as such by a municipal historic commission that I'm aware of. I couldn't find any evidence of that. And the other statute, the regulation of the state, I believe, says, what did I say here? There's, there's, there's no significant environmental, historic, or ecological features presented by the stone wall that are, that should be protected. So, since those are the two, that's the regulation and statute that we would look to, and it seems like there's no statutory or regulatory protection for it, it falls to you to decide what is reasonably necessary, remember that shrub? You know, the court said, can't remove, shouldn't have removed the whole shrub, should have only cut back a third of the length.
You know, I think one of the neighbors made a good point and said that, like, the rocks from the wall are actually in the road, and I think that's true, right?
Within.
But I think one is actually on the road, you know, I don't know if it fell or what, but I, I mean, I think that's a problem. But I, I'd be interested in knowing whether the owner wants an opportunity to move the thing back a few feet, because if they really like, you know, I don't know, I kind of wish I knew what the owner's interest was. If the owner's not interested in the wall, then, then we should, we should move it. I mean, it's definitely, it's like in the road, part of it, the rocks are on the road.
So I guess, you could establish a timeline that provides, now we're in winter, of course, but it's just on a wall, it seems like it could probably be moved, nonetheless. You could either establish a timeline that says, we are gonna provide the property owner with X number of days to relocate the stone wall, and if it's not relocated, then you're authorizing the town to take action to have it, you could say, removed. Or you could say, you know, the rock, the rocks, you know, the wall disassembled and piled on a spot on the property owner's property, because unlike shrub, where you're gonna kill it when you cut it, these stone, stones may have value to the property.
Right, right. I, I mean, I thought it was sort of difficult. Like, when I was pulling out onto Bear Hill Road, I thought it was, there was like an issue with how far up the road we could see which one's near the far.
And there isn't much foliage this time.
Right, right.
When the foliage is growing, it makes it even more difficult and dangerous.
Yeah.
So you gotta, if, if the homeowner, acting through their representative, is agreeable to either moving the wall or having the wall moved, you know, the rocks moved back and they can rebuild it later, or having the town take the entire wall away?
No harm.
Nope, then, then do it, right, just permission, do it. If they refuse, then I think we just have to have a surveyor go and stake out that street line, front property line. Keegan Drive is a relatively new subdivision, so it should have pins and monuments. And when they bought their lot, they bought a lot that has a street line on Bear Hill Road. I'm willing to bet that the bumped out part where the rock goes out to the pavement, that's, that's in the town right of way. The other one, the straight part might be on their property, might be town property, it might be split. But at least the curved out part, and if we don't own it and they're aggressive, then just take out the part that's in the town right of way, which I think the town has the right to do. It's nice to ask the people if they want the rocks, and to give them a reasonable period of time, but otherwise.
Let me just ask, what if that does not resolve the settlement issue?
Oh, you mean taking out the rocks?
Normally, you get, you normally get an easement from people, I mean, the town can take an easement.
Well, so, I don't know, again, the issue is the stone wall, as it's been defined by the complainers, is interfering with the public's vehicular line of sight. I don't know, as I sit here, because again, I haven't retained, the town hasn't retained a third party to opine on the subject, what part, if any, of the stone wall actually impairs the line of sight. So we could take the position, well, you know, we can come in, whether it be ten feet or whatnot, and anything within our ten foot right of way, we're gonna remove. I don't know if that's gonna resolve the issue.
Taking out the curved up part will make it better, but even taking all of it out may not give you what it should be, because the road.
It's like, yeah, yeah, yeah.
That may be the ultimate issue.
So we could definitely make it better. So hopefully, the people are gonna come, you know, come to an agreement, and they either say, the town can take the wall out, or we'll remove it. But if not, I think we just have the town engineer just locate that front property line, and then just tell the people, we're taking, you're not acting, we're gonna take the stone.
And so maybe what we could do to then proceed in, well, continuous phases, is start with that action if there's no cooperation, and then reach out to the complainants and say, can you inform me whether or not the action of removing this portion of the stone wall has resolved your complaint?
Right.
Right? And then I'm certain I'll get response, and I'll can report that.
The homeowner may say, look, if you're taking out the other part, don't leave twenty feet of wall, it's silly.
You know, I don't, I, I've learned not to assume anything.
You know, it'd be interesting to know, have more information, like, is, is, what part of the wall, how much of it is, you know, on town property, how much of it is?
I didn't hear current expenses.
I know, I know.
As I said, I think a surveyor could determine that.
But I mean, I think at the first level should be asking them if they're willing to do it. They might just be willing.
If they're willing to let.
And that's where we're at.
You don't even have to hire a surveyor, if they're like, some of it might be on our property, whatever, it doesn't.
That's, that's where we're at, I just didn't want to delay further because of the potential significance of it.
Yeah. I mean, it has been like that a really long time, right? I mean, and the road, the way the road is, is not ideal. Because even if there was no road, even if there was no wall there, I think you may have issues, especially when it's, you know.
There's a belief that the wall has.
Yeah.
People drive faster, now it seems.
Yes, people need to slow down.
I don't know if the, the wall has shifted. That's what one.
Yeah, some rocks may have.
It looks like there's been shifting.
I don't know how stone walls behave. I thought they just sat. But I could see rocks falling forward, but I don't see the wall in the middle of the night creeping forward. But I don't know, we can look at historical pictures through magic, the magic system, and see if we can determine anything, but that's not gonna be, that's just gonna be anecdotal. I think if you wanna know with certainty, we need, as you suggested, input from a surveyor, and.
But it's a moot point if they're in agree.
Right, so that'll be, I'll proceed along the lines that I'm proceeding. And then, what's your, what time, should I wait till your next meeting, or should I report back, or before we take action? Or should I take action within?
Jump to an agreement, just go ahead and.
That, that I understand, but what if we don't have an agreement? How long do you want? Do you want us to wait for me to report back?
If, if there's no agreement, and they're just, don't touch my wall, I think it's all mine, then have the surveyor locate the thing, and then they.
Then we'll probably have to, that'll probably be by your next meeting anyway, by the time the surveyor does his work.
So we won't take any motion action at this point, we'll just let you follow through on some of the.
Right, I appreciate the discussion.
I mean, I could, you know, it's, it's a nice street, it's a nice wall, you know, if I lived there, I'd probably wanna move it, you know?
Yeah.
But, but it definitely is, I think, a safety issue there, for sure.
Your suggestion is right, if they, if they want the wall, but they don't have the money to pay somebody to rebuild it, and if they're willing to have the town just push it back a few feet.
Well, the question is, we can't, it would be ideal if we could, like a modular unit, pick it up and move it. But it's, you know, I don't think, it's one thing to have our town employees remove the rocks, because that's simple. But to reset the rocks, then it's not gonna be set right, then it's gonna fall down.
They're probably not gonna do it by hand, they're gonna do it with a loader or something.
I, I, I would imagine, again, I haven't asked that question.
I mean, I think that when people drive by there, or on that area, whether or not they're going on Keegan, it, you know, the ideal is people would, you know.
And I'm trying to remember if there was actual any foliage.
That is probably a significant issue.
Behind it, yeah.
I think you said that the homeowner did have some, did pay to have a brush clear.
Yes, yes. So the first step, and as I said in my email to you, was, first step was for the landscaper to remove the foliage, the invasive species that had overgrown, thinking that since no one had complained before currently, that maybe it was the excessive growth that was protruding out, and so I said, let's start there. And the homeowner paid for that. And they were timely in their addressing of it. So again, I don't wanna suggest by not hearing back as a, that they haven't been cooperative.
And they could be busy, you know?
Yeah, but I will reach out tomorrow and follow up, and follow your instructions, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So we will, we will just hold on to the action on that. Okay, Simpson Property?
I'm working, yeah, I'm working with thirty friends, we're very close to having the agreement from the state, the grant agreement done. And we're also working with the Autobahn. So we're, I'm gonna optimistically say we're on target for April one closing. We're on it.
That's exciting. Then, a decade, almost, or eight years, I was a bloodwashed rat. But, okay. Um, Park and Rec, I was hoping that Jen, uh, the chair was going to be on, uh, but there's some acting affectable tonight, Stephanie's, they've been running. So, um, we, we've kind of moved through things rather quickly, which is, it's a good thing. Um, so, but they do, uh, have a special, the commission does have a special meeting tomorrow night. Jamie is online with, she is on the commission. She is on the commission. I don't know if she wants to have any, um, Jamie, I know you're on, do you wanna have any, make any comments with regard to the commission at this point?
Um, I could pretty much just say that we have our special meeting tomorrow. Um, we're gonna be reviewing potential applicants, trying to develop what the hiring process would be like. I don't know if the other, um, board of selectmen members are available to come, but I know that you guys have been involved with Parks and Rec, so it'll be beneficial to come, to come and maybe help us outline how to go forward with the hiring process. I know bulk of our work tomorrow is gonna be talking about the budget, um, because we don't have a director yet, we're gonna have to be doing some work on that as well.
Thank you very much.
Can someone just fill me in? I don't know any, I don't know anything about this. What, who's being hired tomorrow or?
No, 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 nobody's being hired tomorrow. We have applications that were.
Yeah, I, I thought a few months ago or, uh, or I don't even know, three or four months ago that we, I was, I thought we agreed that the board of selectmen was gonna review the, um, job posting.
Well, they, they actually used one, they kind of went on, they've joined this association now. They've used, um, that as a template to, uh, to go forward with the advertising, was a pretty basic standard sort of, um.
Oh, no, okay, I'm just, that's, yeah, I, I didn't realize that any of this is happening.
It's a recommendation of the bodies, so this, this is the body that.
Will hire, will do the final.
Right.
Right, yes, yes.
My, my rec election was the same as yours, Jen. I thought, I thought, I know Park and Rec commission, uh, commission members were gonna, uh, dr- send us a draft, but I guess that didn't happen.
Yeah, I apologize if that's, um, but they have been getting quite a few responses.
So, um, what, what I s- suggest is when the recommendation comes from the Park and Rec, it should come with the draft, the, the, the posting.
Posting, yeah.
And if you find the posting unacceptable, then you can modify it and it could be reposted.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know.
Yeah, and we, I mean, we encourage you guys to come to the meetings. We've had a lot of meetings, um, a lot of meetings more than the previous commissions have had. Awesome. And we're definitely looking for input from everybody, um, so we've, like, I believe we've had, talked about like six or seven meetings that have been hours long, uh, so absolutely. And I believe, you know, we were talking, I was talking with Jen, um, the chair, and we, you know, we were asking if you guys could be a part of this, you know, this part of the process to just talk about what the hiring process would look like.
Yeah, that, that'll be part of.
Yeah, is the Park and Rec director a board of selectmen appointment or a first selectman appointment?
We'll do it as a, we'll do it as a board.
Okay.
We will do it as a board, it's too important a position to be, yeah.
Yeah, so the Park and Rec commission is, is reviewing and it's gonna make recommendations.
Right. I mean, they can send more than one candidate potentially and then, you know.
Yeah, and I think that's what we did, that's what, like, we didn't know as board, as, as commission members, what, you know, like, we were, we were trying to talk about that tomorrow. What does, what is the hiring process look like? Are we just, you know, screening the, say we have 15 applicants, screening them down to a smaller number to then go forward and what would that, you know, who would be on the interview, you know, interview panels after the basic screenings happen? Um, what would that look like? Uh, because obviously this is, you know, new to us and, you know, um, trying to make sure that everything's covered appropriately.
Uh, Jamie, just so you know, Jen, uh, gave a, did just pop on, so Jen, I don't know if you wanna add anything. Um, I don't know how much of, uh, Jamie's comments you heard. Uh, but we were just sort of, you know, talking about tomorrow night's meeting, it's gonna be budget and basically kind of a, an initial review of, uh, you know, applicants and how the process will be set up to move forward. So I don't know if you have to, anything to add?
Um, yeah, so sorry for joining you late. My kids actually just got home from Bethany Hoops, which we're excited to have up and running. Um, I don't know. So I apologize if I'm repeating anything, um, but we had a really nice turnout. Um, the second and third grade group um, actually is, I think we have one open spot, so basically full to capacity. Um, the K1 spots were completely full and I believe four, six is either at capacity or super close to it, um, which is fantastic. So clearly, you know, families were super excited to have these options available for them again. Um, I did hear Jamie, you talking about the fact that the purpose for tomorrow's meeting is to look at budgeting, um, for next year. So we're excited to dive into that and we've been working on some research into, you know, different program offerings and looking at other towns and price points and things like that so that we can be prepared for that. Um, we had a lovely turnout for applicants for the director position. Um, so we have a really robust pool to pull from. Um, so we have to talk through what that process will look like and how the logistics will exactly go and begin looking at those applications together to see, you know, which candidates we should, um, you know, consider bringing to you guys and bringing in for interviews and what that process will look like. But it was lovely to see that we have a really fantastic pool to pull from. Um, so all really exciting and positive things on our end. Uh, and then otherwise, the committee has just been really hard at work with getting policies and procedures developed, um, which we have then sent to the town council, um, or not to the town council, to the attorney, um, for review as well.
Okay, thanks Jen. Hope your son's team or whoever was playing did well.
Yeah, they had a great first practice, thank you.
Good, um. Okay, then, uh, the next action, Leslie, we are jumping into all of your, uh, grant.
The grant, so, okay. Um, all right, A, ARPA, all the funds have been allocated and the new projects that were approved at the Board of Finance meeting in December to clean up the last bit of the funds because of shortage, um, projects that didn't cost as much as originally anticipated and that a lot of those are already set in motion, so everyone that received funds from the town is quite pleased.
And we took it right down to the last penny.
Right down to the last penny.
Yep.
It was, the federal government gave the money to the town, we were not going to return it. We were going to use it to the best of our, you know, for the best, tried to put it into the best places to, um, move forward with that. The steep, um, grant, um, the addition is in progress. Um, everything has been specked out, approved each step of the way by the building inspector in town. And we are working with an oversight, with an architect oversight on it, so everything is progressing on that. Um, the Cabrera, those two grants are complete, they are finalized. Um, the been signed off on, on the first grant, the second grant is in the process of, uh, state final. The Delora grant, we have received our first reimbursement tranche from HUD. So we are, we have replenished the front money that the town approved. So we are moving forward with our next stage on that, which is to finish the boxes on this floor that were not done with the initial, in the initial phase, as well as the audio and visual enhancements for the gym. Um, TRIP, that is a grant from the state. We are the only town in our Cog that qualifies because they are for rural towns. Um, the deadline for submitting applications for the new pro- for the new round of grants is February 7th. They now require a minimum of a 20% match from the town. So the question that the Board of Finance will be wrestling with is, do we resubmit the project of Round Hill Road that we have submitted before and have had it declined, knowing that it will cost the town, that the town will have to put 20% of the cost into it? It's a question that the Board of Finance will be looking at.
So would that be about a hundred thousand or no?
Well, a little more, right. A hundred on a $500,000 project, yes.
Okay.
Is that what the, uh, cost estimate is or?
That was our initial cost estimate. I don't know if it has been re, if it has been updated. Yes. So that is what, I mean, that's, I don't know, I mean, the, the question is, would, I don't know. How do you feel about submitting that? Let's, let's, let me ask that question. How does this board feel about our pursuing submitting that, knowing that we have to, that the town would have to put 20% in?
Well, you're not committed until you accept it, right?
Correct.
And we'd be getting a 400,000 toward it.
Yeah, I guess what you have to look at is, um, if the town, if, if, if we don't get the grant, we determine we're not never gonna get it, um, or we decide not to, not to, uh, but, you know, for the hundred thousand, could we do a reduced project that would accomplish most of the goals? You know?
You mean for under a hundred thousand?
Well, that's, I'm saying, that's, that's the question you look at.
Right.
If you, if you couldn't, then you're still, you're still ahead.
I would find it hard to believe that we could be able to do it for a hundred thousand, the work that's required to.
Well, and then, and then again, we're talking 500,000, if, if that's not really the cost, if it's more, then you, okay, I, I know other towns have, and this was more with paving, using federal money through the state, the requirements were so much, they said, you know something, we could just do it our way for less than what our share of this expensive project will be and so you just.
I think you're framing the is- the issue like how to decide in a good way. But I think I remember, I'm remembering, I think along what Paul is remembering, that if anything, it, it would cost a lot more than 500,000 to do it properly or to do the project in the, in the full, in the fullest, um, way.
Moving poles, don't wall, grading, because it's, it's that like hump that has to be pitched differently, there's, there's.
There's, there's no harm in applying, right?
Oh, right, right. Yeah, and I, I mean, I, I, I agree with Bob. I think that if we apply, I mean, I, I'd be interested in knowing, like, is there something we can do that's different than what we did during the pers- application procedure last time that would maximize our opportunity to get the $400,000? You know, like, did, did we, did they say anything about why we didn't get it last time?
We didn't get it last time because our project didn't have sidewalks and bike paths. That's what they approved last year.
But I wonder.
But they changed, that they changed the parameters.
Hmm.
Right.
So, not, not sure what they're looking for.
Maybe we put in sidewalks, I don't know. I don't know. Right, right.
No, but I mean, painting bike symbols doesn't cost much. If that, if that made the difference, you know, I mean, it's kind of stupid to.
You're widening your person, well, number one, it's too narrow now.
Yeah.
So to even put additional bike lanes, it means it would have to be even wider than what we're trying to do just for safety purposes.
Right.
Oh, then no, I wouldn't.
Yeah, yeah, so that was the intent.
I'm just saying if they, if they, if they required you to, I don't know, I'm trying to think, it was, um, Beth, Bethmore Road. When you go around on the corner from PEC, the town got money to go widen it. One year, and then we had to widen it to 30 feet or something like that. I remember the first selectman at times said, we'll never do that again. The amount of money that cost, we could have paved miles and miles of road. And everybody was pissed off that you got this 30 foot wide road that goes back down to whatever, 20 feet at the end of it. Um, no.
Yeah, okay.
So, yeah, so I mean, it, apply and I guess if you don't get it this time, kinda, it's the handwriting on the wall.
And we just, you know, they, the, the guys that, um, applied the first time were so like, you're the only town in this cog that's eligible to get this. And they were like, you know, they were so excited that, wow, okay. And then we didn't get it, so, yeah.
Yeah.
So we could try again.
When is it due?
February 7th.
Oh, okay.
7th.
Okay.
And the plans and stuff are already done, so you just have.
A lot of, I mean, most of the, the hard work was done. It's a matter of updating it, reviewing the current guidelines and finding how it has to be updated and modified from the original submission.
And not to revise the cost estimate.
Yes, and revise the cost estimate. Okay. Um, and then, um, this senior slash human services grant, um, Robin had received approximately $15,000 for enhancements to senior programming. She has started to spend that money. She spent all the money that had to be spent by December 31st. And the balance of it will be spent by the deadline of it, which is September of this year. Uh, she's doing it for, like, there's a lot of technology stuff that she's done. She's, she's gotten iPads to help, you know, educate how to use, you know, the, today's technology, just, and she, and the health fair went into it and stuff like that too. So she's working on it and she's excited about the opportunity to enhance the services with, you know, through the grant funds. As far as G, the new applications, at the moment, I do not have anything new to report. Um, I am hoping that new project application ideas will come out of the grant committee that we are putting together. Because we are looking for input from the residents. What do you want to see? Where would you like improvements to the town so that we have projects that we can then go and source funding for? That is the whole purpose in putting this committee together, so that we have more people looking for projects for the town and researching potential, um, funding opportunities for them.
Have you gotten any new interest in people join, wanting to join?
I have some individuals that are willing to assist, most of them on a temporary basis. But if we can at least get started, um, it's open to all residents of the town, anyone. And we have some department heads that wants to, that wants to weigh in on it. Um, we also have members of the Board of Finance that are willing to be part of it.
That's good.
So, I mean.
Was this something that was gonna be in the bulletin again or reposted? I, I can't.
I think it was.
Or maybe it was.
December.
December, okay.
That's all I have, thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, I just, a couple of, listen FYI, which Jen and I actually have to follow up on, because I'm not sure of the, our legality or our liability. We've had a couple of people reach out for use of the gym. Someone who homeschools their children and wants to use the gym, um, on a flexible schedule for like an hour or so randomly, um, so that his kids can kind of come and, like, run around and shoot baskets or whatever. So I just don't know if there's any kind of a, uh, like obligation because it's homeschool children, what's our liability, uh, you know, they're running around in there. Um, so we have to kind of follow up on, on that. And then another gentleman has, uh, reached out that he had, he said he has a group of guys, uh, that wanna play basketball. Um, once a week until March and it's not a particular group, um, like a club or something like that. Uh, so I just need to kind of figure out, uh, follow up with him a little more, uh, to get a little more information as to, is it gonna be the same night every week that he wants? Do, you know, if we're gonna charge them a, a rate to at least, like, what time does he wanna use it from? Because our custodian only works until 8 o'clock at night, so, uh, do they get charged if they wanna go past 8 o'clock and have, and need the custodian here? Uh, custodial charges, um, so there's, there's a few issues that need to be followed up on. But I just wanted to make you a- aware of those two requests for the part to the gym, so.
We wanted to kind of proceed slowly since we're still in the process of developing policies and procedures for the use of recreational facilities of the town. Uh, and we wanted to bring it back to the body, but, uh, it's a public building, right? So, uh, the public has access as long as it's open, uh, and, uh, not otherwise being used, right? So that's kind of, I think, our preliminary position until we determine whether or not we have an affirmative obligation. I don't believe the town has an affirmative obligation to provide space for physical education purposes to home study students. Uh, the statutes outline the duties of, uh, the local regional boards of ed, but they don't address home study students in, uh, specifically in the statute. And, uh, the, uh, the, 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 kind of the, the, the primary case, it's a Connecticut Coalition for Justice versus Rell. It's kind of like this Supreme Court addressed an issue related to the obligation of school boards, but they didn't extend it to home study students. So it's really up to the parent providing a home study education to provide adequate or equivalent education. But I haven't finished my research on that because it's, it's a novel issue.
Uh, but they could pay to rent the gym. Uh, but they could pay to rent the gym for the period of time that they wanna use.
If they wanted to, right, but uh.
They'd also have to provide um a certificate of insurance.
Right, they would have to file policies and procedures which are being developed.
Yeah.
But I mean, and they're gonna pay if they go to the YMCA.
Of course, right, right.
So.
With a JCC gymnasium or something.
We just wanted to let you know what we, what was being reviewed and that. We're just advancing in the ordinary course, yeah.
Um, other than that, um.
Can you check the um chat? I mean, people have been writing things in the chat who are observing that might be of some utility to you.
Exactly. Process, Round Hill, the number two town meeting, there was the pushback on this project. The town, the, uh, just, so that's, can't reinvent the wheel.
I mean, the pu, the pushback on the project was that the town was gonna have to pay, you know, five hundred thousand.
Yeah.
You know, I don't, I don't know if the pushback, it would have been the same if we got a grant for it, for the project, right? I can't see, like, I, I don't know.
I mean, Round Hill, the biggest thing is the safety, because it's narrow and the number of times of. The town crew has picked up side view mirrors because they've gotten knocked off the vehicle because they're so close to each other when they're passing each other. So, um, it really is a safety line of sight, um, issue. And so, yeah, um, but, I mean, like you said, it, it doesn't hurt to apply for the grant, the worst thing that happens is they say no, you don't get it.
Yeah, and then, and then I think you have to look at, could you, could you make the situation better without the, whatever the cost is? If it's five hundred thousand or seven hundred fifty thousand, whatever it is now, which the people didn't wanna pay to widen it that much. But you may be able to make, make the situation better, although not maybe meet all the criteria that you'd have to for a state funded project.
Yeah, I think what they say, we'll find out what the criteria of how it's changed since the previous application and see, you know. Cause most of, most of the paperwork has already been put together from the previous application, so, uh, we should be. Good to go, go, go. And uh.
Um, oh, I was wondering, someone told me that the Bethany doesn't have a contract with the trash people, is that, is that true?
Oh, no, it's signed.
Okay.
It's signed, it's in place.
Do you, do you not remember when it was signed?
Back in early December, yeah, it was official.
It was going back and forth. It was, what had happened, what, let me explain it, what had happened was, I had emailed, uh. I forget his name, the, the council for the MSW uh vendor. And we had gone back and forth, we had finalized it and he did not respond on certain. Uh, I'd say typographical errors, so it was in substantial form that had been accepted to by all the parties, had not yet been, had been signed by the vendor. But before I had the first selectwoman sign it, I wanted to have the errors corrected.
Right.
So he didn't respond to me, so we had the signature of the vendor, but I did not say to the first selectman. That I felt it was appropriate to sign until the errors were corrected, and then it took about two months to hear a response. So, uh, but it's effective as of July one, it's been uh operating as of that date under the terms of that agreement. But we call it that delay in response, and because of my instruction not to sign a document that was not corrected.
Right.
Uh, it was not signed until a later day.
But we're good, we're, we're up and running, but.
Yeah, so you have it handy on like, um.
I can email it to you.
That would be great, if you have electronic, that would, that would be great.
It's quick, I'll do it now, if it's not, we'll send it to you.
Yeah.
And it's a public record if anyone wants it.
All right.
I, I just have one more thing, it'll be sort of a, I'm not even gonna bring this up, but the minutes say that we were gonna discuss in January. The Bricer thing with the fire marshal, and so I just.
I hummed it was left off deliberately, right?
Well, I, you know, he was out, he hurt his back and he's, so I haven't really had an opportunity to follow up with him, so we can certainly bring it up the next one.
I, I just wanted to not forget because it.
Won't we get any information from the tour or?
Um, you know, I, I just, I just, while I was preparing for this meeting, looking at the minutes and I think Bob said. We'll renew this and review this in, in January.
Yeah, and like I say, he was out.
Okay.
So, um, I didn't follow up with him on that and we'll, we'll put it on the next.
And I don't even remember, was he gonna follow up?
I thought I was gonna look at, see where, it was some, right, in Tony or seeing.
One, one of the towns that has.
And report back.
Yeah.
I checked with Orange Fire Marshal, of course, he's been approached by the company, but they're not gonna do it, they just feel that the extra cost of. The, the, the cost that this company will charge the effectively.
Not on the agenda, if you want to, it's a regular meeting, you could.
I know, I was gonna bring that, but since we've been very casual.
Yeah, I just, I just want.
Yeah, no, no, we're not, we're not taking any.
I just don't wanna.
Technically, right, it should be. And to add the, the.
Yeah, I didn't know if you left it off.
No, no, I, I've made a note there, I'm gonna make sure it's on.
So it doesn't have to be in February, I mean, if he's, if he's not ready, whenever he's ready, right, yeah, okay.
We'll, we'll follow up.
We'll definitely, uh, because if there's any action that needs to be taken, I'll make sure it's in February.
Or if, yeah, or whenever, if he's ready in March or, you know.
Um, motion to the.
Second, and it is seven forty six. Thank you, everyone who attended uh virtually, enjoy the rest of your evening.